...grand grant by, we have a five-year component for, oh, sorry, for operation and maintenance of the groundwater system. That is going to be covered. The other portions, which is the $10 million, is available to the developer for capping and for the stormwater system. The only thing that is remaining would be continued monitoring. Under the existing lease, the developer has all of that operations to do. Under the existing lease.
So if I can make sure I understand. There's 30 million that's in the grant, but 10 million we've agreed to set aside for the developer to cap it, which leaves 20 million. When the 20 million of the grant money is spent, is the developer reaching into his pocket or is the city reaching into our pocket?
Okay. Right now, there's 24 million dollars in the escrow account. 30 million was the total amount that we had. Out of that 24, 14 million is set aside for the groundwater system. The remainder, which is 10 million, is set aside for the other two components, which is the stormwater management system and capping of the site. That, those two components are completely in the hands of the developer, together with the continued O and M, or operation and maintenance of the groundwater system.
So if I'm trying to get to a simple, simple yes or no. Is the city going to be on the hook for any of the future costs, yes or no?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, now let me go on.
No, but we have so many people.
Okay, listen.
You know you have Tuesday.
Listen, my three minutes are up and I understand and agree. So all I'm going to suggest at this point is, I have other things to say. I don't want to be a hog and keep everybody here when they should be home with their families. But I do agree that this whole discussion, first of all, thank you for having it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving the public, thank you, Mr. Galvin, and Council for giving the public a chance to comment. Having said that, you, there needs to be a lot more discussion and thank you.
Thank you.
I have three questions. When we first entered into this agreement with the developer, was that like three years ago, I guess? Was there a lump sum of money that the developer paid the city to get this whole thing started? How much was that?
Seventeen and a half million.
Where is that money now? Where is the 17 million we got three years ago when they first got into this with us?
The 17 million was allocated under resolution by previous city administration.
So it's gone?
No, it's not. How much money is there? The reserve?
There's, there's 5 million set aside.
Right, but the rest of it is gone then?
In the reserve. The remainder of it was, was spent on...
Alim, you can say it, the money is gone. That's the bottom line, right?
The money is, was set aside for capital projects.
Right, 5 million dollars is left.
Only 5 million, but that is...
The second question I have is, how much money are we getting a year?
We're gonna tell you.
No, no, no. How much money are we getting a year right now?
No, let's wait for that 17 million. You said we have only 5 million. That's not what I know. There's 5 million in the super reserve, right? There is a 2 million unallocated. That's 7 million, right? Okay. And 3.5 million was put aside for the employees. Okay.
Well, what's the bottom line? How much money do we have left of the 17 million three years later?
We, we have 7 million remaining.
Okay, so 10 million is gone in three years. How much money are we getting a year now under this 99-year lease? Nobody has said what that is.
Presently, we are not receiving, at, at, after five years, the city receives 1.5 million annually.
So, starting the year after next, 2016, 2017, we will start getting a million and a half dollars a year?
That's correct.
Okay. So, my third question then is, you know, I kind of think about it like when you win the lottery and the state says you could get your money now, or we could give you an annuity over 20 years. I always said, if I won the lottery, you better give me that 20-year annuity, okay? Because 10 years from now, I'm not gonna have the money because I would be spending it. And I think that that's what would happen with this municipality, is that it's better off for us now to take 1.5 million dollars every year. We know we're getting 1.5 million dollars than to now take all this money up from, which is only 20 million dollars. There's only 3 million more than you got three years ago. For the next 97 years, you're getting 3 million dollars more than you got three years ago and you tell us what we're gonna be sitting there looking stupid because we won't have any money left. So I say we don't sell.
I have a question, Alim. And about that 17 million dollars, and I think you need to give an explanation about it because it looks like we have, we had a check for 17 million and right now the money is gone, right? Can you, can you give a brief overview of the allocation? But you said the money is gone, but it's gonna tell you where the money went. You don't want to know, okay? Okay. But you asked a question. Do you want to know?
No.
No? Okay. From what I remember, we, you said we have 7 million, right? 3.5 million was for the employees, right? That's making 10.5. 1 million went to the library. That was 11.5. How much money went to the police department? That's when you have to give an overview of the money. It's not like we took the money and it's gone. You need to explain that, okay? Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Question, was the diversity of employment goals met? You said there's 190 or so people working on the site every day.
No, right now...
I'm asking, were the diversity, that means people of color, were their goals met in employment?
A question for, for the site manager and...
Yes.
Or the local preference.
Yeah, I want to know.
And I remember in the agreement, the local preference, it's the company responsible to make sure that residents from the city of North Miami are working. They have a question for you. Out of that 190 employees...
Or more people working every day?
What is the question?
Were the diversity...
Diversity, yeah.
That's the term I used. I don't know which one you used when you drafted it up. Were those goals met?
Of course, yeah. Out of the 190 people that were counted working on this project last month, 62 of them were city of North Miami residents. The requirement is that we, that 10% of all of the workers on this site be city of North Miami residents, that would be 19 out of the 190. We had 62, so you're roughly 31%.
Okay, and what about diversity, meaning people of color?
That's not a requirement, but we had probably, if I had to guess at it from what I've seen, and I'm out on that site every day, I would say well over 50% of them are of people of color.
Well over 50%?
Yes, ma'am. You saw the picture?
That's shocking. I didn't see any, yeah, I didn't see anybody in the picture, that's why I'm asking you.
You didn't see?
I didn't see any, any person of color in the picture, that's why I'm asking you. And when I look at your staff people, I don't see anyone of color either. That's why I'm asking the question.
What you need to do is to give us a copy of the one, a report about the 190 people.
I would like to know that information at the meeting we're having Tuesday.
Okay.
Also, this is preparing, you're talking about a 99-year lease. I am not in any way impressed by what I saw in terms of the planning for the site because I don't see a futuristic, a futuristic type of design, planning for the future. By the time that the, the buildings will be constructed, they'll be the past already. At the planning meeting I went to the other day, one of the people, I don't know their name, said, in one of the plans that were brought up, that the plan was not a plan for the future. And I think that person had great insight. I don't know what their name is, but if you look at the tape, you'll know who that person is. I think that this plan too is not futuristic enough, not thinking about the future, the 21st, 22nd century. And is affordable housing included in this plan?
That's a question?
Yes. Is affordable housing included in the plan?
And the question for, for the developer.
Thank you for your questions. At the current time, under the current plans, let me just back up first. In terms of the futuristic, that's why these are purely renderings and these will change over time. The development of this will take place over time. One of the key things to understand is that, the building code in North Miami, which is forward-thinking, requires that all new buildings be LEED compliant. That means they be green, they be energy efficient.
Understand that.
Recycle the water. So all of that starts to bring in all these new future technologies. So that's going to be, and trust me, I agree, it's very important that you try to be cutting-edge. One of the key things though about being cutting-edge and putting that kind of money into the architecture and design, requires that these be something that there's a return on. And to do so, you're, you're talking about condos again, which is why this is mission critical for maximizing the value of this property for the city, for the residents, and for developing. With the question on affordable housing, at the current time, the plan does not accommodate affordable housing. It's not required under the documents and from a tax-based perspective, the best way to really maximize the taxes here is to look towards a for-sale product.
Well, as a citizen of North Miami, I propose, in my opinion, is that some money be set aside to accommodate housing for people who don't have money to pay high, high-priced condo, some type of subsidy, as well as for senior citizens. There was talk at the time about a scholarship, money being set aside for a scholarship set up in the city of North Miami. We were supposed to bring our ideas and, and those are two things that I haven't seen addressed, that I would like to see addressed. Is it possible that there be some type of subsidy program set up so that a percentage, a percentage?
Can I say?
Said people, people may have the opportunity, who may not have had the opportunity, to live in a, in a condo and...
Can I just say something? And you're raising a good point, but we're not at this point. We haven't sold the land yet. We haven't decided whether or not, if we're gonna sell it. If we do so, you're gonna be able to make your suggestions, what we're gonna be, what the money gonna be doing, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor and Council. Jean Marcellus, 615 Northeast, 615 Northeast 140 Street. Jean Marcellus, and this time, I'm really not for or against Biscayne Landing. The only thing that I want to raise is that, Biscayne Landing still remain the biggest asset of the city of North Miami. Whatever the Council has to do with this asset, they have to do it very wisely. Think about it now. We only four members, Council. In less than a week, we're going to have an election. I think the four members, three weeks, I say, less than a week. If we proceed with this item, item on the next Council meeting, on the 14, on the 20 of this month, the early voting will start. That's make it less than a week. My question is that, my comment is that, not will a question, why, what is the wash? What is the wash with, with any issues that complicated, that difficult?
Constable Marcellus.
All this material that, in that items.
Constable Marcellus.
Why don't we wait?
Constable Marcellus, there is no wash. About two months ago, we passed a resolution where we, we get to an agreement with Olita, you're gonna remove the field and there's a possibility for you to purchase the 50 acres. We went through the process about the appraisals and the appraisals came, come, and then now we put it on the agenda. We haven't voted yet. We haven't decided what we're gonna do.
Okay.
You said Biscayne Landing is a good asset for the community. That's why we are here tonight. If it wasn't important, we will just put it on the agenda and on Tuesday, we just, we were gonna vote on it. Because it's important, we want the input of the community. That's why we are having that town hall meeting.
But that's exactly what I'm talking about, okay? What I'm talking about is that, I, I believe myself, it's irresponsible for the Council at this time to move with this item for the next meeting. And, and what my, what my suggestion is that, is to defer this item until after the election.
Okay, I understand, but it's not irresponsible.
This is, I think this is my concern.
I understand you, okay? You want us to wait after the election, but let me tell you something. I understand that, but when you said it's irresponsible, we're not responsible for what happened on May the 20th, right? Since May 20th, as a governing body of the city, we have four Council members who take responsibilities. And even with four people, we have a working government right now. You need to give us credit for what we have done since May the 20th. Now, if you said...
Listen, if you need credit, we give you credit for that.
Thank you very much.
But still!
No, I understand. You're, you want us to wait. We're okay with that. That's a suggestion.
Yes.
Okay?
Okay. But we're not, we're not going to fighting over that.
No.
Oh, we're not.
But don't say irresponsible, irresponsible.
But the only thing that, my, I think my concern is that, please, on May, on November 4th, we will have a, a, a final election and we will have one elected body to make the Council completed. Then, we will move with this item with it such important for the city of North Miami. I think everyone will be happy by then. I will be happy.
Thank you.
Wherever it's going to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Yes?
Jacques Despinos, 95, 131 Street in North Miami, a homeowner, a taxpayer, and I pay for that land too, because I've been there for almost 20 years. That was a bonus issue to all the residents of the city to pay for it. I'd like to echo what Constable Marcellus said. Today is the night of October. On the 20th of October, there will be election. In 11 days, people will start voting, early voting, and after your election, give you another total 29 days. It is totally unfair for anyone of the Council to decide to take a decision and that piece of land, we pay so much for it, to make a decision only four of your guys. I understand the concern of the Council. Thank you to bring it forward so people can invent their opinion, let you know what I stand for. But whether you want to sell it for 10 million, 50 million, I can care less. What I care is, just with the four of your guy, want to make a decision for the full Council. When you're the interim mayor or a interim member of the Council, there's a certain limit. This item is too big an item for only four of you to take that responsibility. You don't want it to be in your back?
Mr. Despinos, I understand what you said, but it's not irresponsibility, democracy. The democracy want a majority decide. We are a supermajority.
Let me hear what you say.
If you said, Mr. Despinos?
Yes.
If you said, we're gonna have an election in a few weeks?
Yes.
Where we're gonna have a new mayor?
Mm-hmm.
You would like to see the input of the new mayor in that decision?
Not the new mayor, the full Council. Well, I'm saying the full, on the charter. I'm talking about the full Council to take that decision, not the four members.
But not, not the full Council gonna take the decision. It may be a 3-2, it may be a 3-2, it may be a 4-1, it may be a 5...
That's the full. Right now, the waiting has been going on the city for the past, it's going 3-1 because let's figure out, no choice between the four members. Otherwise, you get a land doc, you know, council in your hand, don't, you can't even move. So that means even younger, they have to compromise your position to give the third vote. So I think in this item, I think it's might be fair. We only, all we ask to be fair on our behalf.
Constable Marcellus, you want to say something?
Okay? That's why we ask.
Eh? Come in, come say something.
Because that's where people get upset and scared, is when your guys say today, you get a people hearing, tomorrow you'll vote.
Who said that we're gonna vote? You don't know what my decision's gonna be?
Is this gonna be on the agenda for tomorrow, for next Council meeting?
Yes.
And when you put something on the agenda, to do what?
Anything can happen.
Anything can happen and the first person should not be in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable. We're looking at this. I think the more important thing as far as the timing that you all are worried at, about, is making sure that we have the proper agreement. And right now, we don't have the agreement, so I'm not, I'm not gonna vote on anything that I haven't had time to fully understand and read. The Council is doing fine. I will take into consideration whether it means anything to have five or four. We still have three votes, so if we do take the vote, our... Okay, well, I'll, I'll take it into consideration, I'll think about it. But if this...
If you were an activist, you will not vote for it. Like the people, well, do this, do that. Now, you just got done to show.
And, and why do you think I'm not an activist?
Eh, eh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Let me say something. Okay, there, there, okay, let me let you speak instead. Yes, sir? Go ahead.
I have a question for the two Tillmans. Herb first?
Who make? Why is Herb Tillman? But you have Mike. Mike, do you wanna answer the question?
Uh, Mark, Mark Sell here. I have a question, I live at 151, 151, right around the corner.
Herb!
Is it Herb Tillman and Mike Tillman in that order? This is a Just the Facts man, or sir, question. Timing and sequence, we have four things coming up. Spine Road, the acreage right around here with the car dealership, that's number two. Number three, the 50.3 acres, the residential. And number four, the retail. What are we likely to see and when? First, with the spine road, when that will be finished and open. Two, what's going to happen with this property here? We have 12 or so acres and 2.2 acres, I think, that are up for sale. What's the status with the car dealership and when is that likely to happen? And number three, presuming that a decision is made on whether or not to sell, whether it's sold or not, then what's going to happen and when with the residential? And when will the city start seeing the money from it? And then fourthly, in the far, in the more distant future, timetable on the retail?
I'm gonna make you, I'm gonna make you do it again because I don't remember all of it, but it's a good question, so let's start there.
One, spine road.
Okay, spine road.
This corner.
Spine Road is already commenced. We anticipate the spine road to be somewhere in the range of 16 months. Is that fourth quarter of 2015 for it to be fully done?
And open in 2016 so that traffic can go from Biscayne to 150?
Open in the fourth quarter of 2015, but as a developer, I'll add a quarter to that for my construction team.
Usually what happens. And two, the dealership here you've been talking with for a year and a half, three car dealerships owned by Warren Henry?
Correct.
Then there's that for-sale sign on the street. I guess that's for two and a half of those acres.
So let's talk about those.
What's happening with that?
So the Biscayne Landing frontage, the car dealer is well underway. That, that deal, that lease is ready for execution. It's being reviewed by the lenders for both parties at the current time. So once it receives lender approval, we can begin to proceed forward. On the corner parcel, which was being marketed by New Mark Night Frank, we have decided at the current time, until we understand and finalize our site plan, that that corner could be very interesting, so we've actually pulled that back off of the market for the time being.
Ground could break on a car dealership in 2015?
By the time they do design and permitting, we think, you know, the, you know, beginning, yeah, so it'd be towards the end of 15, beginning of 16 for them to be groundbreaking. They still have to go through design and permitting and the usual processes.
Okay, and then finally, well, next to finally, anyway, after the decision is made by the Council, and whatever happens, whether it's a lease or whether it's a sale, groundbreaking on those condos and the length of time for the planning and design.
Let me clarify that question.
What?
Depending upon the outcome of this, will dictate whether those are condos or those are rental buildings, which is a tremendous difference, both for the value of the overall project and for the value to the city. The focus has been a lot on this 1.5 million dollars of ongoing rent. The, the real focus and the real money that comes to the city is the future money in the form of property taxes. And those condos will generate when fully built, in a present value, 45 million dollars of taxable, of property tax income. The rental buildings, fully built, all 4,300, that's 15 million dollars. So you could see that huge delta over the 97 years. You're talking about billions of dollars that the city would lose out on.
Now, I'm not completely clear on that. If you can clarify that a little bit, is this to say that if it is a long-term lease, it is more likely to be rentals? And if it is a sale, it is more likely to be condos?
That's correct. And the reason why that is, because when someone buys a condo, they go and get a mortgage. That bank has to say, okay, what's my collateral? Well, guess what? Your collateral is on a ground lease. And when the title writers try to write, underwrite insurance, that too is impacted by the fact that they actually don't own the fee underneath the condo. So the reversion, which is what they were talking about in the appraisal, the reversion would go back to the city. So that for a condo buyer creates a major problem. And that's why you get impacted values, as we've seen on this property before in previous condo developments.
So then what you're saying in essence is that if the city were to, if, if, if the city were to sell you the land, 45 million a year in taxes. If the city were to rent it, or that we were to have the rental over 99 years, you were to rent it from the city as a land lease, 15 million in taxes a year, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that, that's about the estimated value. The other thing that's important to understand there is the timing of the development. Condos is a very different model because the model down in South Florida is you actually pre-sell and then you build. So that has turned around the model where you had all this excess supply 10, 12 years ago, well, not even eight years ago. On the rentals, people are only gonna be interested in developing those as they see the demand coming, which means it lags. It's a slower development timeline. And so this will launch into your fourth part, the retail. Retailers, it's a chicken and an egg problem when you're building retail next to residential because residents don't want to live, particularly very large projects of this nature, in the middle of nothing. They would like the convenience and what the convenience of Biscayne Landing offers is the ability to park your car on Friday and be able to do all your weekend activities, the movies, dinner, shopping, pedestrian, or ride your bicycle. And you could walk right to the retail that's right there. And those residents want good retail, convenience retail, there's Starbucks, the Paneras, et cetera. However, the retailers are the flip side of that argument. They need to see the proof of concept. They need to see that there's residents actually living there and there's a demand base for them to come there. The better the demand base, the better the tenants. Thus, certain areas, i.e. Bow Harbor, gets what they have. So with that understood... So with that understood, while we talk to these retailers, which we've made a major migration from the original site plan, which if you remember, the original site plan contemplated a big box power center with, uh, surface parking. And the residential was all rental because what we were able to identify as potential interested tenants in a large rental community was the Rosses, the Dick's Sporting Goods, and those big box type tenants that like big visibility and big parking lots. When we talk about condos with these retailers, all of a sudden, we're talking to a different demographic of retailer who's genuinely interested in creating something that would cater to the residents that own here. So it creates a fundamentally different project in terms of value. So timing-wise, it's very important. We look at it not so much as phase one, phase two, phase three, but that certainly there will be some residential ongoing while there's some retail ongoing. And ideally, if we can move this project forward, which this is the first major point for that, we can proceed with the retail developer with whom we've already have an LOI and we can move it forward and get that deal going. They think they could be up and out of the ground within twenty-four to thirty-six months, which at the same time, we would be commencing the residential to get that moving along. So it's simultaneous.
And the retail developer being whom?
There's several different retail developers with whom we have outstanding discussions.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Holly Cohen, and I hate to admit it, but I've been a real estate attorney for thirty years. Your explanation as to the inability to get a mortgage is nonsense. There are buildings on Miami Beach now that have ninety-nine-year leases and they were able to get mortgages. My husband runs about five or six banks and they will give mortgages. If you have a ninety-nine-year lease with an option for another ninety-nine years, there is no way that a bank will say that they will not give you a mortgage. It's not like you're in the seventy-fifth year, it's a hundred-and-seventy-fifth year, and no one lives to that extent and that period of time. So you will get a mortgage, but that's neither here nor there. We can make up whatever stories we want and we will have to live with it. But let's go back to, um, the appraisal. The situation with the appraisal is it was done it wrong. You don't, I haven't said anything yet that I need a response.
No, I called him to answer you when you finished.
For example, I go downtown Miami and I find a piece of property and there is a car parking company and they have a lease for ten years. They're not gonna sell it to me for a million dollars. They're gonna sell it to me based upon what I can use that property for. They're gonna sell it to me based upon my thirty-two-story building and then they're gonna sell it to me for fifty million dollars and tell me that that's what it's worth. Not based upon the lease, but based upon what it is economically valued at for what you can build on it. That's number one, and that's the simplest example. The second example is you sell a property to a third party with a lease on it. I can understanding that you give a discount to it. However, once you sell it to the person that is the less-ee, that lease merges and the lease is null and void and therefore should not even be considered in the determination of the value of that particular piece of property. That is how real estate is bought and sold in this country, not based upon some pie in the sky and it's saying that you're gonna remove an economic value because of an existing lease. That lease is gonna merge. The buyer's the same person with that lease. Therefore, there is no lease and should not even be considered. I don't even know how you even came up with that. You have a piece of property that has to be valued based upon what it is going to be used for and nothing else. Based upon zoning, based upon economic future valuation, that's what you base a, a piece of property in a sale of a piece of property. That what, I don't even know how you came up with your idea of, of subtracting. There is no subtraction. It is, you're gonna build a twelve-story building and have fifty-two apartments, then you sell it based upon that economic use. Nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you have a piece of property that has a ninety-nine-year lease and somebody comes along and says, I wanna buy that piece of property, okay, and I will offer you what that property is worth, um, I'm just gonna use the figure.
That's only if that's a third party. I've heard it before. You said this before.
No, you haven't heard it before.
Oh, so now we change it. Okay, go ahead.
And, um, I'm willing to sell it to that person for what he says is the fair market value. The only problem is I can't give him title to that property because he has to take title to that property subject to an existing lease. So the fact that you have a lease and you think there's a higher value out there, you can't just disregard the lease and sell it. The city does not have the ability to sell that property to anybody else but a letter partners because of the lease. Now, the question was raised before, well, why don't you just forget about the lease to sell the property? Because there is a lease between two people. Unless both of them agree to break the lease so that there is no longer a lease, then you can negotiate an arms-length transaction. But breaking the lease is an, is, is a completely...
I'm not talking about breaking a lease.
Well, that's the only way.
No, I am not talking, because if you have a less-ee, a lesser that sells it to each other, then the lease is null and void.
The lease is...
But if you sell it to a third party, then you give an evaluation as to that lease term. This city could turn around and sell it to a third party and say, I'm, I'm the landlord. I'm selling you my lease rights. And then you put that valuation in. But not when you have the tenant and the owner say, I'm gonna sell it to you, then it's based upon the economic value of that property, not based upon the lease terms. The lease terms is only for a third party, unrelated third party.
No.
Yes.
First, first you have to say, can I sell you the property? Now, what you said is that the two people...
Yeah, you can sell.
Let me finish. What you said is the two people, because they're both intertwined, can agree to sell the property to each other. If you talk to the city attorney, okay, and I know she's here somewhere, the city will turn, tell you that the first legal basis is whether or not you can do that. You can only do that if you break the lease.
You have an option in that lease, so therefore you are not breaking the lease.
Now, both people can agree to break the lease and they can do exactly what you're saying. But when you do that, you undo the entire deal.
Well, I don't know what you're talking about 'cause it doesn't make any sense of what you're saying.
I'm telling you what the law...
No, don't tell me what the law is.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you about the value.
You have an option in a lease to purchase.
I'm arguing about what legally can be done.
Then that's when you don't have to break the lease. You make a purchase based upon the option that has already been predetermined the right to do and therefore that lease merges and it becomes null and void except for those terms in which you incorporate into the option contract. I don't really know what you're talking about. You're doing a song and dance and why, I don't know. Yeah. Thank you.
Mike, you, you wanna say that? No? Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So, so what I'm, so what I think the council is hearing now, or your community, your constituents saying, this rush to vote may mean somebody is not doing enough investigating, enough background information is not being given. Look, in our very recent past in North Miami, too little investigation has led to people being led away in handcuffs, taken to jail. It's not been the best picture. So right now, I think what you hear everyone saying is, take some time, let's investigate this more thoroughly. It may be a good, it may not be a good proposition, but to rush in two weeks to do a twenty-million-dollar deal, it's not like going to Kmart and buying a two-dollar shirt. This is a big deal. So that's the first thing I'd like to encourage our council to do. Bring some sanity to this. Don't rush. There will be a vote in which a new mayor will be elected shortly. I'd also like to encourage our council to try to get a four out of five approval for whatever you do end up voting on, whichever way the council thinks is best, but I'd like it to be a full-on majority for this particular issue, which affects us for ninety-nine plus ninety-nine years. That's, that's the first thing I'd like to say. Um, the second thing is, um, the spine road has taken a couple of years and another year before that's finished approximately. I know it's a big job because there's a lot of grading and refilling and so forth that y'all have been doing. As someone who lives in the community, I don't see the bang for the buck right now because all that infrastructure is being done. What I'd really like to see as a citizen is the, some of the commercial being done. I'd like to see how good a job you're doing on that. Prove to me that you guys are not just going after more loans and, and more money to, you're, you're trying to refinance, you're looking for more financing money. My problem with that is that, look what happened to the previous developers of Biscayne Landing. They went after more money, they refinanced, they went out, they went out, and we were left with a difficult situation. You're looking to refinance again? I thought you all had deep pockets and were going to finish at least. The commercial development that I could see, that's going to take, I understand, from not this Mr. Tillman, but the other Mr. Tillman, another few years to see. Please let us see some commercial before you go about buying land or trying to buy land from the city that you're going to build more condos on. I like to see something concrete from my point of view. I know you said chicken and egg scenario. I get that, but I'd love to see a real visual of what, the quality of what you're planning to do here, not just the promise that it's going to be a beautiful picture or, or anything else that looks very nice on, on print, but I wanna see it in the flesh, as it were. Um, then, after we see some commercial, then go about trying to get your option also. As far as getting your option, you're looking to buy, um, what, fifty and some odd acres. Why not city council, why not offer them, once the commercial is built, why not offer them fifteen acres, twenty acres at a time to make sure that they don't, sorry, go belly up like previous developers have done? I'd like to see this go to its conclusion, really, I would. But our unfortunate experience has been the previous developers have bitten off too much and they haven't been able to bring their ideals, their dreams, to fruition. But they have been able to refinance several times. So if you'd like to address that...
Yeah, I, I, let me, let me just respond to some of your points. I, I think one of the key things to understand is LFRAC as an organization, we've done this before. We've done it before in New Jersey on a project four times the size. Um, and in terms of, you keep bringing up the refinancing, I think that's important to talk about. The utility work, the spine road, the mass grading, the deep dynamic compaction, all of those things, by the time that's done, we'll be into the project for north of a hundred million dollars. There's not many developers in this country that are able to say, before I start generating a dollar, I'm a hundred million dollars in just on work. Now, in terms of the refinancing, which you keep bringing up, one, the world's very different than it was, um, but two, the important thing is that what we're doing is a dollar-for-dollar financing. Literally, the same money that we had, we're getting a new loan for the same exact amount. This isn't to take equity out. Right now, we're in the mode of putting a lot of equity in because financing horizontal development is a very difficult thing because of what the banks learned in the last cycle. When you finance land, it's difficult. To address your other comments, I'm not gonna repeat everything I said about chicken and egg, but it's, it's unfortunately, it's a truth, that it's very difficult to put something that the residents would be extraordinarily excited to have here without being able to prove to the retailers that there's a residential component right here and that the proof of concept exists. It's, it's, it's a very, very difficult equation. Trust me, we're trying.
Whole Foods just did it. Whole Foods just went up the block. There's several other retail stores going up the block that are not saying, we're not going to come into your neighborhood like Whole Foods without you developing a development around us. So they're saying, and they're a really nice upscale store, they're saying that, you know, we do have the people here.
When you have frontage on Biscayne Boulevard, it makes a very big difference. Unfortunately, the majority of our retail sets back off of Biscayne Boulevard.
But you have some on Biscayne, don't you?
We have very little. Of, of a hundred-and-eighty-five-acre site, we have, give or take, about eight-hundred, eight-hundred linear feet, which isn't very much at all.
Oh, so the car dealership?
A portion of it is the car dealership. That's correct.
Okay. Okay. But let me ask you, even with that, even with not having the frontage, you'd have signage. You'd have, if you made a lovely enough development, which you've kind of tried to show us, I'll bet you'd have all kinds of signs advertising these great shops. I would drive in a block if I knew you had a Trader Joe's or a Fresh Market, et cetera, et cetera, which is kind of what you're telling us you're aiming for.
Yeah.
I would do that and so would most of the city. So do that, show us how beautiful you can build.
We would love to. They go hand-in-hand.
Do that first. Do that first.
If I can, I will. Hand-in-hand. I'll try. Thank you.
We're gonna have the last questions or comments. It's eight, eight-thirteen.
Good evening, everyone. We're in Prevettell, one-one-nine-five-zero, North Bay Shore Drive. Before, uh, before we start the scary month of October, which this meeting I think is part of, I'd like to thank our council and the staff of North Miami for having this meeting and for a letter partners for hosting the meeting. It's very nice to have this and probably not easy at times. I'm, I'm really kinda confused. Um, I, I'm not a professional appraiser, uh, but I'm trying to grasp with what exactly is the value here of this land? And I'm guessing, I'm guessing a lot of people here are wondering, what is the real value of this land in question? What is it worth? 'Cause I don't, I'm not too sure if we heard that. You know, we heard some discussion to the, about the appraisals and, you know, I, I looked on the report and maybe I read it wrong. I thought some of the comparables were five million, six million, seven million dollars an acre. Maybe I read it wrong, but here's the offer, less than half a million dollars an acre. I, I, I must be reading something wrong. I must not get how this appraisal process works. And I, I'm guessing that if we go with this deal, that in the ninety-nine years, the ninety-seven years, whatever, that land reverts back to North Miami, right? That land comes back completely with the buildings and everything else on it? So that's what's kinda confusing. So these people that are now buying this, these apartments, now have like a different sort of landlord. Now they're renters, they were owners and now they're renters. That seems kinda strange. It seems like shouldn't it be just free and clear? Shouldn't it just be free and clear?
Let him answer that first question. Go ahead.
No, but...
If the fifty acres are sold, what is left, which is about another hundred acres, which consists of everything you see.
No, 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 the fifty acres, please.
At the end of the hundred years, that goes back to the city.
The fifty acres.
If it's sold, it, it doesn't go back to the city. You don't own it.
Doesn't go back to the city?
No.
So we would sell it for twenty mi... That's, I, I, I'm sorry, I, okay. Let me, let me then, okay, now that you've clarified it, I, let me try to share how also we might think of this land. Well, if you're east of Biscayne Boulevard and we have a very prominent local real estate agent with us, if she's still here tonight, and you can't possibly get a quarter acre of land for a quarter million dollars. There's a lot across from where I am, landlocked, odd-shaped, they're asking six-hundred thousand dollars... odd-shaped, they're asking $600,000 for less than a third of an acre. 600,000, 699, sorry. So you really can't get, in North Miami, there's no chance of getting a quarter acre for a quarter million dollars. That's one acre for $1 million. If you transpose that to 50 acres, that's $50 million. But I'm also wrong there, because that would only be single-family residential. So that's not the highest and best use, that's like the lowest use almost, except for when you give it away. So that's wrong. So I went, you know, how am I going to find this out? And I said, "I'm going to go to, you know, I'll go here, to this site here with Miami Today, March 12, 19, sorry, 2014, Miami Today, commercial land prices soaring." And there's a whole list of average sale price per square foot of land, so that's a, that's a good start. And then it says, "Biscayne Corridor and Northeast Dade," and it's $122 per foot, and $96 per foot. And, you know, I said, "Oh, but that must be Aventura." No, no, up above here, it says, "Aventura 259." So, that is us. That's us at $100 and more per square foot. And this land has a premium view, is against a premium academic setting, it's very close to the retail, it's really pretty darn good. We're like 12 miles from both of the airports, from the, the cruise ships. This is a really nice situated prime piece of land that has incredible views to the east, great location. So I said, "What happens if we were to take that price per square foot?" Well, how many, how many feet are there in an acre of land? Well, there are 43,560 square feet in an acre of land. Well, let's multiply that times 50 acres. Let's multiply that times $100 a square foot, on the low side, $100 a square foot. Did anybody do the math? Has anybody done the math?
You will tell us.
Oh, you're right, unless I'm wrong, it's $217 million, 800,000. 217 million, 800,000. And basically, that is what a buyer would pay if they wanted to construct something in this region. They will pay more, they'll pay twice as much if they go to Brickell, they'll pay a little bit less if they want to go to Hialeah or someplace like that, but that's what it is for this region. And I said, "Holy cow, could that, could that possibly be correct? Could that, does that make any sense in reality?" And, again, I'm not an appraiser, but, you know, I did a, I did a, what I, you know, what I was once taught many, many years...
Mr. Prevattel.
A simplified res, simplified res...
Mr. Prevattel.
Simplified...
On Tuesday, you're going to have a presentation before the council.
I'm almost done.
Understand that, wait, can you listen?
I'm almost done, I'm almost done.
Understand that. Can you tell the people, on Tuesday, you're going to have a presentation before council?
Yeah, no, no, this has nothing to do with that.
He's going to be talking before the council on Tuesday.
No, this has nothing, this has zero to do with that, zero.
He's going to redo the same thing again.
This has zero to do with that.
You can watch that on TV, on Channel 77.
This has zero to do with the presentation on Tuesday, they're two completely different animals.
Okay. Are you, do you have some questions for, for the appraiser, or you just want to make comments?
I, I have a couple minutes, just, just to finish this up, and other people are giving a lot of time.
Yes, I have a minute.
So, I'm wondering, could that $217 million figure have any basis in reality? Why would someone want to pay $217 million for this piece of land? I said, "Let's, let's go back and find out, let's, let's, let's counter-engineer this, let's do a residual land value." And I, I put together a simplified residual land value analysis, and the projected, and it goes backwards, you, you find out, what is this project worth, and then you take away, what did it cost, and then you find out what that land is worth. And you can apply this to any piece of land, anywhere, on its highest and best use. And in this case, we're already accepting that this multi-story complex is the highest and best use. I'm going to rule out the single-family residences. So if we take the quantity of homes, dwelling units we can put in there, I put down 4,300, it's actually 4,390. If you take the square footage, which you had on the screen, at 1,000 square feet, and if you take a sale price, and this is low in our area, and I got articles for that as well, $450 per square foot. The average right now, as it's published, is 450 to 550. The luxury sales price is $1,000 to $1,200 per square foot. I'm taking the lowest price. The summation of that is that the gross income, at the end of putting up this product, is $1,935 million, nearly $2 billion. But, what's the cost of this?